I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now ready to approve claims. Does your chair make a motion to adjourn locally as presented? I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented. Any question about those? I have one question, and it's not about this is right. The second one down says tax sale refund claim in amount of forty-six hundred dollars.
That's if they can rent, someone reclaims their property and have a tax sale refund. Or they also have where they paid more.
They run more at the auction than what they owe, or what?
That's called surplus, but the refund is back to the people for the taxes and anything that they...
Okay. Okay, so are you in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, now we're ready for park board president Bob Burton. Good morning, Bob.
Morning. I have just a couple questions that I wanted to ask you. Here is the last park board meeting, the park board decided on Royal Custom Painting Company, which is the one in the middle. So I've been in contact with them, that was their insurance papers right there. So that's, they'll start on that as soon as possible. They came in, I was given eight thousand dollars to have funds to approve, that you we talked about. With that being said, that spike, the bid is just under five thousand dollars. And I was wanting to ask permission or your blessing on maybe using some of the extra money from the septic maintenance up there. What, since we were here, someone, one of you recommended going to the health department. I did, and they had a full scale map of the septic system that was completely out of, completely away from where we thought it was originally. So we found that, but in that being said, there was a problem from the dump station with RV's dump to the septic. That is just a three inch pipe that's under down there, goes back up towards the clubhouse down there, and that's where the septic is at. So there's a possibility that we may run into more than our initial bid on the septic system by, you know, that was certainly the maintenance pumping and cleaning of it. We're just gonna have to see what work comes up, but we may have to have that line cleared out. And there's a possibility it could be really easy to clean it out with pressure and water, so.
So it comes from the dump station, makes an elbow and goes right back towards the...
Goes straight, now the dump, it goes down, and then from the top of the concrete pad, it goes down, and then it goes back north, straight to the corner, towards the corner of the clubhouse somewhere.
Because we're in right there.
Yeah, it's, uh, moving off.
So you gotta be careful on what kind of camper you park there, be too heavy, couldn't pressure the line. That's good information.
Yeah, I'm glad we found it out, because we're prepared to put in two new camping pads, and I hate to put a camping pad right on top of the septic system, so. So...
Well, what do you think, gentlemen, is that something, and Ted, does that have to go back to the council that it's being used for something different?
I don't, Bob and I talked about this the other day, I think that he brought that up during the...
The very first, the very first time I brought it up, that I had asked for the monies, I was hoping that the painting bid would come in under that by a long shot, and it did. But I actually expected more than what the painting bid was. So I, you know, I mentioned in the meeting was for the septic system and French Post Park preparations for the hundred year.
I'll make a motion for him to use the rest of the money, let him use the septic system, because it's not worth it anyway.
So I got a motion and a second to allow him to use it for the septic system. Are you in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, we still didn't, what do you think, Ted, does it have to go back to the...
If it's contractual services, we're in the same category, or?
We can look at his actual, let's just look at your actual request, and if it's on there, then I think we're fine. Okay?
Okay.
I'll look it up this afternoon.
We're also, just to give you that, we're gonna clear the, everything from the Sheldon House and Deer Creek Park to the bridge. Probably the first time you can see the bridge from the ground with the road, this is a French post, so you got...
Say again?
Which, uh, the... Lockport Bridge, Lockport Bridge.
Yep.
So all that, all that is cleared off, most of it is right here.
One flat, a week or so, yeah?
I haven't cleared it for a while.
I haven't yet. Health department's gonna do water testing for us, they contacted me, but the water is not on. So as soon as the water is turned back on to the spring, we'll have the health department inspect.
I'm sure you run it a while before they take the test.
Yeah, that's another thing that I wanted to mention, you know, I know you just approved for the septic system, but we would like to do maybe a water filter up there at Deer Creek, it's artesian water. I made the mistake when I camped up there last summer of filling, hooking my tank up to the hose, or the hose up to my tank in the camper. When you turn the water on inside the camper, we did an egg stitch for just a few minutes, so. The health department also was one that, I talked to him about this, and he said that filters aren't available, and he would help me to...
I thought it'd be good idea.
Stop to talk to them, but we can either put the filter out in the bump house or in the business where everything splits off, so. That was one of the things that I wanted to include in there, but I thought it was important.
Is that sulfur? It's not like I made...
Yeah, it takes water, sulfur, yeah.
Which is mineral, which is probably good for you, but...
Yeah. Sure does smell very good when you work.
It sure does smell good, doesn't it?
You don't drink it.
I have to say a thing, I hope I grew up on that, it wasn't probably that bad.
Well, now you know the rest is for...
Yeah. I stopped over and talked to the highway department the other day about the ADA upgrades for the parks that were supposed to start this year. But they're not aware of the plans that were made when the former superintendent was there. So I didn't know, you know, if that was still going on this year.
Well...
Except for your part, right?
Pardon?
Which part, both of them?
Both of them.
The rest of the... What are the words that needs to be ADA compliant?
Well, what Kent has told me was that he, they were going to put in an asphalt pad at French Post Park, right at the entrance going into the cable gate and going to the Sheldon House, they were, a sidewalk was going to be installed.
Of asphalt or concrete?
Well, I suppose the sidewalk would have been concrete, we, I never got that far looking on that, but that was his plans for French Post. A parking pad with a sidewalk for accessibility, wheelchair accessibility to the Sheldon House. Deer Creek Park was a parking pad, upper, right outside the door, so they could have the same accessibility there. But we have a lot of people I've seen in wheelchairs that are, and need another parking pad if this gets done. I think down at the bottom by the pond, a lot of people get out down there and then they wheel to the pond bank, just push off to the, uh, the wheelchair there, so. Whether it happens or not, I was just curious, just if, you get a little bit...
Is there all ADA stuff out?
It's with a Q, can we add?
Can we add?
I think there's some in there, isn't there?
Yeah, because I would use it all over the floor, that would be...
I can go check.
And then is that working, yeah, I mean, did you...
In some ways, you may have to work with him on that, and work with us on that, see if we can get that done.
I'll say, I told him I, he's never discussed anything with me as far as what the plans were, so, and we didn't, we didn't know anything. I mean, we're going to find out, I mean, we need to figure, figure something out.
Well, we had Paul and we had, we had to work on the ADA compliance for the whole county, which is part of some of the... And, yeah, we haven't done much on this quite a while. When I first came in, Paul did quite several full projects.
Is that, is that something that came out of our budget, or do you have any set aside for that?
You have to have an AVA coordinator, and when Paul left, they called, and if you remember when we interviewed Kent, we asked him if he was continuing to do that, because it wasn't, I mean, auditor's office does, I mean, I don't know who that...
Kent had mentioned that there was a coordinator that he was working with, I don't, was that maybe his cell phone, or was that...
It was supposed to be him, yeah.
Yeah.
He agreed to do that, so I specifically asked him that during the...
He hasn't been heard, though. I bet you look, you're probably somewhere.
But anyway, the only reason I wanted to mention that was because Kent had told me a year ago or so that the parks, both parks were on for twenty-fourth year.
See his line of... I'll look and see if I can find it. He's, he's deep after us about it, Bob.
Pardon?
Deep after us about it.
Okay, yeah. All right, that's all I have.
Any questions, Bob, any questions?
Nope, thanks for that.
You're not, you're not, it's Bob. Yeah, I asked you out.
And the filing system wouldn't, wouldn't agree, so I gotta look through a bunch of stuff, see if I can find it. Okay. Okay, I gotta take my glasses off to see. First thing I want to bring out is, I didn't, forgot to give it home, it's the end of it, but the rest stuff will be fairly quick. Is our clothing lounge for the guys?
Yeah.
We, since I've been there, we've had some type of clothing lounge, we either had uniforms or something like that. I always wanted to do is take that money from that, because we quit using Centos, because those guys was getting not the right size back. Sometimes they get old, you know, they wasn't using the, where they sent it in and cleaned it, they were just taking it home and washing it. So we thought, we're losing money there, so what we was planning on doing is just taking the money we used from that and dispersing it having other places, like, like Depp Moros or Dale Hardees or something, who wanted to go where. We've contacted them, and they, they said they're willing to do that, and they know what they can buy and what they can't, they've already been given a list. I was gonna ask, who wanted to go where, and then send those names, so it could be about three hundred seventy-five dollars a year, per person? Yeah, per person, and I took whoever gets the superintendent down, I took them and the office manager off. You know, they're not out working with stuff. And sometimes those guys, especially the guys that shoot oil, they mess, they sometimes go to and go prepare boots here. That stuff is not nice on, that stuff, so.
Right.
I've got a policy that, that it had, kind of had, can I revise some of it? So we was just kind of asking for the approval to do that, but some of the guys have been asking about it this morning. I told them I'd bring it up.
Do you get anything else from Centos, do you get shop rags and stuff like that?
They do our rugs, our throw rugs, they do those, and I think that's about it, probably we can get... We used to supply the gloves and everything, but we added gloves in this. And I think there's a list in here, some stuff, the stuff they are allowed to get. And what we was gonna do is have them have a signed receipt to bring back, so we can keep track as well as place, kind of a double check of what they have left, what they don't have left.
So did anybody express their concerns to the company that weren't getting the right, like the whip supervisors?
Yeah, they have, they've called them and told them, said, hey, so and so didn't get the right pants back, and they never got any back.
You know, there's other companies besides Centos?
Yeah.
How many employees do you got right now?
Twenty, including the office people, it's twenty-seven, or twenty-six.
Somebody had twenty-four, looked at three seventy-five.
About twenty-four, the three is a nine.
On your Centos, don't you have to pay that monthly? So you've already paid some out on all your employees?
We actually haven't. Kent started implementing a, of this here, it's kind of like this, but we had to, we haven't done it yet, because I don't think it, I don't know if it ever got approved. So we actually quit doing that last year at some point, like about this time last year. So we hadn't been paying for the...
Right, he started his own allowance, but he took off money, because he'd already paid some for Centos, that's what I was asking.
That was the two eighty, because we got two eighty last year, because it was like March or something like that when he implemented it. So he took the three months off, yeah.
But it's March here, too, so that's why I was asking, did you take January and February off when you figured the three seventy-five?
I didn't, because they hadn't gotten anything since then, we hadn't paid any money out for that.
But don't you pay it monthly?
We did. We haven't paid for the uniforms since, about this time last year. Because they give that, he gave them that two eighty last year, so they whipped all wooden box stuff.
But not all of them used it. No, I mean, some of them still use Centos, didn't they?
No.
It's my understanding.
The only, the only ones that get anything from Centos now is the shop guys, they get shirts.
Well, I think what you need to do is go back to Centos and say, hey, either you step up the plate, or we're gonna move somewhere else. And I think I'll get there and think, I don't have a, I don't care if they go somewhere else and do it, but I think it's easier to track if you just have the Centos come in and we'll give them allowance for shoes. Because like you said, the guys are doing it well, they're, they're destroying their own shoes unless they put on rubber over them. Or you buy the rubbers, put them on their shoes for them, after when they're oiling, they make it part of the safety after work.
And we, we just thought, we just thought with this, if they, they could go get, get the clothes they want, and the places that we're allowed them to go, and that way, they, when they come, run out of money, they're, they're running the year.
Can you buy the clothes from, do you buy the clothes, can they buy the clothes from Centos themselves?
It's a lot more expensive.
Yeah. Do they kind of discount like on these places?
All I know is they, they called, and like, like you can get different clothes from like Moros or Dale Hardees. And we was just gonna send the names of the people and how much they're allowed. And that's, they're gonna bring back their seats and keep track of them in the garage, too, kind of double check that.
Well, that's what I need to interfere there, this, they can, Hardees and, what'd you say?
Moros and...
Marish shop, you know, they can keep track, but it's ultimately up to you to keep track. And you, I have to have a receipt to pay it, so, you know, you're asking for a receipt to be returned, it has to be returned.
Right.
Okay, so then you have to approve, sign off on it.
We was gonna tell them, they have to sign it, and then it has to be brought back.
Okay.
Yeah. We were gonna...
Is that in here?
I believe so.
So I think this really needs to be checked by, I think this needs to be checked by Ted before it's approved, and maybe critiqued a little bit.
I'm not sure who else does the uniforms, but... I'm not opposed to this, I just think it's, I want them to look uniform, so when they're out doing the job, they know who they are.
I mean, we're, we're still gonna supply the shirts, it has Carr County Highway on it, so this is more for pants, shoes.
So you still will get Centos shirts?
Well, we, we purchase the shirts ourselves.
T-shirts?
Yeah, yeah, the, the blue and the yellow t-shirts and that's Carr County Highway.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we get those for them every year, we'll still do that.
So like, the road work group will be like the safety yellow, and the forums will be a different color?
No, we have summer and winter, we do the blue for the winter and yellow for the summer, so, summer though, it mostly has the yellow, yellow shirt.
So is that in here that you would be purchasing those t-shirts?
Oh, we, it's not, but we've, I've been doing it, so.
I think this needs, that's what we were doing the last time Aunt Rocked in, we tabled it, so that Ted and I and whoever could kind of critique it to the other departments that have the same thing, that have clothing allowances. Because it should say, and he's got in here where they can go, but I just think we need to check on Richard a bit. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, motion that they want most people to...
And then if there's anything I need to add, just, I can add that for the next thing.
How many future?
Uh, we give them five, five each.
So that should be in here.
Let me take them off the three seventy-five, I have no others.
No.
I'm gonna have to take them off my chest.
Kind of let the department buy us those.
Okay, I think I have a motion on the board.
Yeah, motion, table was for...
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to table this until we look at it a little more. Are you in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you want it?
Do you have an extra copy for Ted?
I have given this to Ted.
Thank you.
So bring it up next time again.
Okay.
And then if any, any three times here, why, please talk to Ted.
Well, as you know, you have it done.
Anything changes, or anything I need to add, Ted, or?
The next thing is, is there a stipulation as far as how, how long, like if an employee leaves and then comes back, where they can get their vacation and stuff back?
If the employee leaves in good terms?
Yes.
In great reasons?
Yeah.
Well, you just did this for a really great individual, so...
Well, there's, that's the reason I was asking, we've had a few come back this year, and the reason being is, we, we reached out and because we needed drivers, so we asked them to come back. And that's why I was wanting to know how, like, whether six months or a year.
Well, actually, it's not supposed to be, we had to amend our policy.
And an exception.
An exception. So, give us a list of the names and the people, who and why they left?
Okay.
Then we can review it.
All right, Ted, you have to start, pardon, that's, that be where you start, where to start. All right, and how long have they been gone?
Okay.
Well, I don't know, it was just, I like to know the name.
I will get, I will get a list of that.
I'm just saying, the personnel policy says they need to start as a new employee, and...
But if we get, if people come back from that?
Well, the thing is, they've heard that other people's got the back, and it kind of, it kind of burns up, so.
Just one person.
We can review it.
Okay.
What would they, what would they get?
Just pretty much their vacation time back, probably done it.
Like a service on their vacation?
Yeah, like, like, a couple of them that had two weeks this year, or it's their year anniversary instead of one. And pretty much beat out, we extended it.
We got three?
Yeah, there's, yeah, I think there's three.
Come back in full pipe?
Yeah.
Okay, well, Steve wants names, so...
I will get a list of names.
And send it to us, or you know?
Okay.
Please.
And then, just a couple of quick things.
Will you include me on that?
So?
You include you then?
Yep, yep. Just a couple of quick things, just thinking about trading the grader off, the money that I asked about last time you guys said we'd go to council, that's the one we gave, whatever, this would fall into that, as far as, I just wanted to let you guys know, let you guys see this, and like, yeah. I know we're a little bit guys in the dark, but I mean...
But you're saying that this grader was what you encumbered?
If, the money I was asking to spend for some used equipment, this, this falls under that, so I'm not asking for any more money.
But what, you mean a hundred wasn't grader built, right?
Right, it was, it was for a couple of new trucks, and I got to go to the council and ask, use that for that, but I just wanted to show them what you were thinking about doing, what, one of the things we think about doing. That's what this is for. Because I have to go ask them for the money to buy some used equipment with that money we brought over.
What you're gonna ask them is to use it for something else?
Other than branding trucks. Yes, other than branding trucks. We just wanted to buy some, some other equipment, and that's why I was gonna say that you do.
What I'm asking is, is the grader, was that the money that was encumbered for a grader?
Yeah.
No?
I'm gonna take this to the council, too.
Well, I, I know, but I'm gonna explain.
Right.
I mean, I'm just asking that what was it encumbered for?
It was in, for two brand new trucks, and a loader, we're getting the loader. Uh, the two new trucks that were ordered, thought were ordered, wasn't ordered because they're not making it, and just, they're not accepting orders. So instead, this year, I was sort of, see if I can take that money and buy some used equipment that we need, that's what I want to do. And this, and this is one.
And that's just one of them, okay, got it, thank you.
Sorry, I must have misunderstood what he was asking me to do.
That's okay, I just...
I'm gonna give that to the paper, to the office.
Okay, this here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you put them all in front of those graders you need to do?
Yeah.
Great.
Yep. And I think it's pretty good deal, really, is we created two in, or we still have the one, but they said they gave us forty thousand dollars for that, we got twenty-five thousand out the other one, and with that, it's a, one we have that we're gonna trade in, it's got twenty-two thousand hours on it. We spent forty-six hundred, for forty-six thousand dollars, we've been paying for the last three years. But like I said, it's getting more out, if we keep it, we're gonna pull it in and go through all the...
Reboot.
Yeah. And that was a twenty fifteen grader they have up in Michigan, it's the one that's locked. It's got eight thousand hours on it, more visibility, it's got the door sticks, and with that and a one-year warranty, we can get it for a hundred and eighty thousand. So I think that that, that money I was over, we encumbered, we covered, we covered this. I just wanted to bring to you guys, let you guys know. And then, as far as the traverse, he's, he's supposed to get back with me, they got a truck coming in, kind of one of the ones that's basic. I think it's a one term. I think it's a one-term, um, uh, single cab, vapor bed. Um, he's supposed to let me know how much that is, trying to get price or whatever, bringing it up to you guys. And we might be able to fit that in, to, in that money we gave them.
And we already paid for this traverse?
No, the purchase order's been signed, but I'm thinking any money is transferred.
So we don't own it yet?
No.
Did we get it?
Uh, we, we haven't got it yet.
Okay.
Asking for it. But the, but the purchase order.
Okay, what happened to the truck that was sitting out here, man, it was all lettered up.
Um, I'm, we went over there, I've, um, I didn't, I didn't see one that had, there was one over there, but it wasn't Carroll County that I seen.
I think it was white kinda truck.
White cars?
Oh.
Because I, I looked and I didn't see any Carroll County stickers.
I was told it was out there, and I went and looked myself, and I didn't see one, so, and it wasn't a truck, I looked at all the trucks.
You know, you said that, and I went out there and I saw one with a sticker on it, like, I just thought it was, I didn't read it good.
And, um, and got ahold of me for our, um, our yearly, um, bridge inspections, so I went ahead and signed that. We did that the other day.
Year in what inspection?
In yearly bridge inspections. We have to pay like eighty-two thousand dollars for inspecting bridges and all that, and that, we do that every year. We did, yeah, we did that the other day, so, I just wanted, let you guys know about that too.
Can you bring a copy of that, can you bring a copy of that bridge inspection?
I did.
Just have one copy?
Yeah.
Oh, I got, yeah, definitely. Okay, then, uh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I brought the next one.
That's good.
This is like contractor. I think on contracts, Scotty, you need to bring it up.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Cause we have Ted look at them first, then, and then the chairperson signs it, but I think we're okay, you're right.
She, she kinda made it sound like you needed to do it that day, and I was like, cause it should've been done I don't know, a month or a month or two ago or something.
All right.
So, she's like, in order to get it in, in times that we're in, we need to
This makes you responsible now for this, if we don't want to pay, you got to.
All right, well, I guess, I guess I'll have to start, uh, start a savings account.
You might have to ask for a loan.
Yeah.
I don't remember seeing one of these forms before, so.
Okay.
I just want to
Yeah. I'm gonna go ahead and make a request that Scott signs it, get approval.
All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
And you made a motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you seconded, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's not a contract.
Unless I was.
We've approved it, so. Anything else, Scott?
I think that's it.
I do. Um, outside of Camden and Fieldville there, there was one of our old pump trucks sitting there and it's still stickered. I thought we had an employee just parking and going off and doing something, he's not supposed to be there, so when I called over there, they said it's one of their trucks that we sold.
Oh, still got the tire gone.
And still got our, and then it's supposed to have been removed.
Yeah, I don't know why, but
It was supposed to be removed or painted over or something.
And well, we know the moment, so we'll just have to make contact with him, tell him he needs to get it removed, or bring it back over, you get to review it.
Okay.
How do you take those off?
Um, I think you can do it with a heat gun.
There's still a bit of print there, but
Yeah, is the paint, little shiny of there.
No. No.
He had that written paint over it there. Please, we'll go read it.
I just thought they parked there to go to the little cafe that's across the river, tracks, you know, get the big truck out of the way. I went back out of town a few hours later, and I'm like they're still sitting there, so I called Scott and said, hey, we got a loafer? He goes, no, no, we sold that truck, it's just got stickers on it.
Yeah, it was supposed to be, they were supposed to take them off before they went up the river.
And we had very many to saddle them in.
Uh, we, we had a, somebody called, um, the little kid was still there, and said they seen one of our trucks down by Noblesville. We wouldn't have anybody down Noblesville, and that's what it turned out to be. One of them sold.
It was pretty important that we let one of them go, we get that off.
Yeah, we would either get it off there or paint over it or something.
I have a question, the ones that you sold at the auction, did, did you give us a list, or is, was that on the asset list that you removed all those?
We did remove all those off the, what I said, say you are inventory, they were, they've been removed off there.
Okay, so, do you have a list of what you removed?
I could probably get that, yes.
That's what I need.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll tell them.
Okay, thank you.
Then we get that road grader that we talked about?
Yep.
Awesome.
It's something that, like, the next day, and we got it on our chip and seal list too.
Nice.
So, and actually, I have a thought ahead, a list of, the first we was gonna steal, we just have, I haven't made a final copy of it yet. Cause I was gonna put the mileage and all that on there. This is just, this is just, uh, kind of a rough list.
Cause they're running very big, isn't it?
Yeah, we, we put that on here and a few, a few others.
Some of these like were going back over that we did like three years ago or something for, just to maintain them?
There's a few of them, yeah. But there's some of them, it's, uh, like one mile gravel stretches, and we're gonna do, the rest of it's chip and seal.
Usually I like to, when I get a list like this, I like to drive it myself, so I don't look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate you.
And I'll get a better list, like, maybe next time. It's got the mile, it's got mileage and stuff on it, and from over single seal or double seal or whatever. I was just, one I threw together this morning, had the list, and I'm like, I'm just gonna copy this.
There you go. Um, yeah, you don't know how many miles this grader got?
Not, not yet. We, I'll try to find out for the next meeting, like you said.
And we're very little community, drop them?
Not yet. I, I keep looking, hoping to get it.
It'll be probably even this month, probably, it's probably when it comes out.
I think they say use it around the end of March, first April, somewhere over there. So if it was about the middle of April, we'll know.
Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
You should have memorandum of understanding that was signed to the board by Steve on February twenty-fourth with, uh,
I didn't give them that, you've got the original.
Okay.
In your file.
Copy. Here's a, I'm sorry, here's the original, that's been signed, and that should have your signature on it, the sheriff thing, you call it Steve, right? So that, uh, the date on this would be the twenty-fourth, if you prove that, I mean
What was it, February?
Yeah, twenty-fourth. In order to, that the sheriff could, uh, get him in the rotation. This was passed into him, I think, correction. So he was able to work last week, correct?
Yeah, last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. So this is a, uh, it was executed for the board, the board previously in the meeting on the, uh, end of February, second year of February, authorized sheriff to go ahead and reemploy him and, under a written agreement, this is that written agreement. And presented to your authorization that you gave, Steve, uh, signed it on behalf of the board, so the action today would be to ratify the memorandum of understanding, uh, on behalf of the entire board.
I would entertain such a motion, then.
Do you want to, do you want to second it? I'll, I'll endorse the memorandum of understanding with, uh, Deputy Darren Giannola.
It's always worked for them.
How legal is it?
You second?
I second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second concerning this memorandum of understanding. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll get these signed for you.
Just had a couple of things I wanted to point out, number one, you asked that I bring him with me to this meeting.
Ah, there we go. I know you, I figured.
Did he give you a ticket?
Always one of the few that has it, but, uh, I was having trouble placing the name with, with you, okay, I got it.
Welcome back.
I thank you back.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. And then the other thing I wanted to point out on that was the, the cost savings that putting him back on was another reason why we've done this. I think it's actually listed at the twenty-some odd thousand plus dollars, so.
I don't know how many we need. One for us, one for sheriff, one for, uh, Darren?
How many we have? Three and three.
Summertime, Tim.
No, they have, I think they said five or six over the weekend, so it's just, just a little bit of nice weather is always thinking back down.
Well, we appreciate having you back.
Good to be back.
Thank you.
Actually, one of those married in last week, she goes to the internet. And his family are with him, and all the guys came up and supported him, so.
Good.
Didn't you, uh, hire her last Thursday?
Yeah, we, there's two we offered, and there's two more hoops that they have to jump through, but we offered conditional on they pass those last two things.
So it wouldn't actually be almost full staff?
Don't say that yet.
How long has that been since we then pulled that?
At least since back when Kevin left, if not a little bit further back. The word's up there, I'm excited.
Do you have any else for Sheriff?
Nope, just wanted to see if there was copies.
I'll get you one after meeting.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Ted?
The next item is getting back to Resolution twenty twenty-three, dash zero three, which was the resolution that the board, uh, uh, tabled from the last meeting, uh, conducted the public hearing on, and, uh, since the, uh, last meeting, the petition for release has been circulated, and the required number of signatures have been obtained and certified. So, the, uh, resolution is now in order to be adopted, the resolution which approves the lease. And if the board adopts the resolution, then it will execute, sign the, sign the lease, which I brought up for you today. And we should, uh, which, uh, will also go before the board, uh, directors of the building corporation at eleven o'clock. So, this is, this is ready for the board to act upon.
Okay, so first of all, we got to do Resolution twenty twenty-three, dash zero three.
Yes, and I brought you an updated one that has today's date on it, the first one had it placed for February. Uh, so this one should, should have twenty, it should have March six.
Cause when he brought us, it was all wiped out.